Well then, welcome. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm Adrienne Mollenkamp with the League of Women Voters of Athens County, and we welcome you to this candidate forum for the Federal Hawking School Board. We hope that this will provide you with information for the upcoming election. There are four candidates running for two seats on the school board. Those candidates are Crystal Boland, Lynn Genter, Jenny Lee, and Daniel Torrance. And we appreciate all of them for making the time to join us this evening. Please make sure that you are ready for this election. Today is the last day to register to vote or update your address. So if you haven't done that for some reason, you can go down to the Board of Elections office till nine o'clock tonight, or do it online. But this is your last chance. And then please make sure you have a voting plan. Early in-person voting starts tomorrow at the Board of Elections office. If you want to vote by mail, you have to submit an official absentee ballot request form. And then Election Day is November 7th. And we, if you have questions about any of that, you can contact the Board of Elections office for details. In addition to these candidate events, the League produces a voter guide in which candidates provide written answers to questions. You can check that out online now at vote411.org. It will also be coming out in print. It'll be in the Athens Messenger this weekend, the 14th. It'll be in the Athens News next week. It should be up in the Athens Independent. And we'll have paper copies around the county at libraries and other locations.
Can you please hold the microphone?
Oh, thank you. Sorry. Okay, everybody, we just learned you have to get the mic pretty close. The League of Women Voters is dedicated to expanding public awareness and public participation in government. We do not support or oppose candidates or political parties. If you would like to learn more about the League, you can find us online at athensleagueofwomenvoters.org. Anyone who is at least 16 years old is welcome to join our League. Or if you appreciate our candidate events and voter guides, please consider seeing us online and making a donation to support all our local work. I am going to turn this event over to tonight's moderator, Sarah, and we'll go ahead with questions.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Candidates Forum. I'll begin by explaining the forum procedures, which each candidate agreed to in advance. Tonight's forum will include an opening statement from each candidate, a question from each of the media representatives present. Well, you're not our media representatives, but you're our League representatives. Do we have media representatives present?
No.
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
Unless anybody out here didn't tell me you were from the media.
Questions submitted by the public, and a closing statement from each candidate. Candidates will each have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing statement, and a minute and a half each to answer each question. There will be no rebuttals. The order for speaking will rotate, and I will indicate who speaks first. The candidates can see our timekeeper, who will indicate when the speaker has 30 seconds remaining, 15 seconds remaining, and when their time has expired. If a candidate continues speaking, I will say "thank you" and move on to the next speaker. Candidates are invited to share their qualifications and experience and talk about their plans and proposals. Candidates are asked to focus on topics relevant to the stated question and to avoid personal attacks and raising issues that are unrelated to the office being sought. If they go outside these guidelines, I may stop them and remind them of these guidelines. Audience members, please turn off your cell phones. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping, cheering, or calling out, with the exception that after their closing statements, you may clap for all candidates if you wish. We receive questions by email prior to tonight's forum. We are also taking questions from our in-person audience. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided paper. Questions must be answerable by all candidates and must apply to issues or qualifications for their particular office. Raise your hand if you'd like another paper or to have your question collected. Please make sure your questions are written legibly. All questions are reviewed by our League panel here. The panel will remove any questions that, one, could not be answered by any of the candidates, two, are statements rather than questions, and three, are duplicates of other questions. We will use as many questions as time allows, striving to cover a variety of topics. We may not have time to use every submitted question. And now we will begin our opening statements. Each candidate drew a number, and so we'll begin with Jenny Lee. And you have two minutes.
Hi, I'm Jenny Lee. I'm a mom of three within the district and, sorry, doing the microphone thing. I am a parent in the district, and I feel really strongly about participating for the benefit of the district as a whole. I care a lot about the quality of education that both my children and the rest of the children in the district receive. I think it impacts the community as a whole. And I feel excited about the possibility of combining the perspective of students in the district with the management role that the Board provides. And look forward to having the opportunity to serve the district. Thank you.
Next is Crystal Boland.
Hi, my name is Crystal Boland. I am a 2004 graduate of Federal Hawking, super proud about that. I have a child who is a freshman, a niece who's in eighth grade. I have cousins from 12th clear to preschool in the school district. So their education is very important to me. I want to be that communication for my public. I feel like I am approachable if you have questions, and I want to be able to find out those answers for you. So that is why I'm running.
Lynn is our next.
Thank you. Hello, I'm Lynn Genter. I'm going to, Chuck, would you take these for me? What I did was put together a list of my current activities and involvement and some boards that I've been on, so that I don't have to talk about what I do. I'd like to talk about who I am. And I will say right out loud that I am led by my faith. My other priority is my family, and I am a patriot. And I noticed that we didn't start with the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'll take my time to ask us all to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's important, and I thought maybe we'd start that way since this is a public event, and it shows the best of our democracy. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited to be one of four. I'd like to be chosen. And, you know, who wants to be ushered in as an only candidate? I think you'll learn more about me as I respond to questions. But yes, that's where I'll start, and I'll leave it right there.
Good evening. My name is Dan Torrance. I'm running for the Board. I've had two sons that graduated from the Federal Hawking High School. My wife has been a teacher here for about 35 years. I don't want to age her. And I also have about 12 years' experience serving on the school board. I'm running for election because every child in our district deserves a quality education. I am committed to working with the other Board members, the superintendent, and the teachers to ensure that every child can succeed. During my previous time on the Board, we had made significant progress in improving the education of our students. We have increased the number of students taking advanced coursework and reduced the dropout rate. We've also invested in new technology and facilities and hired new teachers to help reduce class sizes. However, I still think there is more work that needs to be done. We need to continue to focus on improving the achievement of all the students, regardless of their background or circumstances. And we also need to ensure that our schools are safe and welcoming for all the students. In addition to the above, I've set some goals for the Board. Increase the number of students who are college and career-ready. Reduce the achievement gap between the different groups of students. We need to create a safe and supportive learning environment for all the students. Attract and retain high-quality teachers and staff and ensure all students have access to the resources that they need to succeed. These goals are achievable, and I am committed to working with the community to help make them happen. Some specific ideas that I do have: increase the opportunities for internships for the industries, credentials, partner with local businesses. We need more organizations to help create internship opportunities. I have more, but we could add to them.
Now we'll move to the question and answer portion of the forum. Candidates will have a minute and a half to answer each question. Candidates, if you should need a question repeated, please ask, and I'll be happy to do so. We are going in this order for question one. First, Crystal, then Lynn, followed by Dan, and then Jenny. And this question was submitted online. Candidates, what do you believe is the single most important job of the school board? And how will you help see that job is carried out in a public and transparent manner?
I believe one of the most important jobs by the school board is maintaining policies and good communications with your Board and your superintendent and treasurer, because those are who you have to work with in order to have it across the Board, as in you guys are agreeing on things. So that's what's important as far as working together. And, you know, the policies are really important. We have to follow our policies. We have to make sure that we are keeping them up to date, as we're supposed to, and reevaluating our goals that we set for our district.
It goes to Lynn next.
Can you repeat the question?
Of course. What do you believe is the single most important job of the school board? And how will you help see that that job is carried out in a public and transparent manner?
Thanks. The school board is elected except for the people that we hire and that we are in charge of hiring the superintendent and treasurer. So we bring good people into the system in those roles. We ask them to execute, especially the superintendent, to oversee the functions day in and day out and how each school is attended, bringing good principals into the system, checking on the credentials, and hiring the right people for the job. I think that the other piece on the Board is that we help with solutions. We listen closely. We're out in the community, all of us who are elected onto the Board, so we bring issues, things forward. There are Board reports, and there's a standard way in which the Board meetings are run. But our opportunity as Board people are to bring issues that maybe haven't reached the level of that table or that discussion. And then when there are critical issues and things to be brought forward, we reach out, do our own research, listen in, and reflect back on what the community and what the members, the parents, and the students are asking for.
Yeah, I agree. I think what we do is we hire the superintendent and the treasurer, and we set the policies. But I think really what we, Bill and I, when we first got on the Board back in 2008, we went around and we met with the teachers. Not as negotiating, not as anything, just to hear what their input was. And I think being transparent, communicating with the community as well as the teaching staff and the other staff, bus drivers, it doesn't matter who they are, if they're working here, we need to know what's going on and what their opinion is to make it better for the students.
I think that the primary function, or one very important function of the Board, is to select and oversee both the superintendent and the treasurer. And, you know, one way to keep abreast of how people are feeling, how constituents are feeling in the district, is to communicate with them. Communicate with the educators and the administration in order to make decisions that are informed and based on what the community wants, as well as what the school district needs, and kind of keeping all of that in mind as you make your plans going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. For our second question, we'd like to know, what do you think are the strengths of the district? And how will you, as a Board member, support expanding those? And what do you think are the weaknesses of the district? And how do you think the school board could help address those? Strengths and weaknesses. We have first Lynn, followed by Dan, then Jenny, and then Crystal. Let's pass this to Lynn.
I think the major strength of our district is that it's a small district. And that's not what the bus drivers would say. By geographical, it's one of the largest districts in the state. But our school system knows each child. I had that experience when I was here for two years on a grant. I worked with some children that were in a dire straits. I learned that through my grandson who's school here. And it was one of those things where I was dropping my hoff, and I was like, "Don't let it be that house. Don't let it be that house." And it was that house. And so I became involved in that family, in that situation. And every time I addressed it without names, people in the school, in the high school, knew them. They knew the situation. So I think one of the biggest strengths is we're small. It makes us more nimble. My husband taught in Columbus Public Schools for over 21 years. It's cumbersome. We lived through desegregation. I don't advise it for anybody. So I think that's one of our strengths. A weakness, I think I would like to see, you know, I'd love to see a flood of diversity of different cultures and people here. I think we're homogeneous. So I think we could work on that. And however that happens, easier said than done.
The strength that we have here is our teachers and our staff. Been around for a long time, and I just haven't seen people that care as much as what our teachers do. And they care about each and every kid. We've had some good ones. And I think on the other side of it, if you want to know what a weakness is, we had 14 people leave the district last year. That's a lot, you know. We need consistency. We need better pay for our teachers. We need better staff or whatever we can do to help support them in professional development. And, you know, a teacher in our district from the last 10 years of their life or their career here doesn't even get really a pay raise because our pay scale stops. We need to fix that. We need to be better than that.
I agree with Dan. Because teachers in this district that are committed and are here, been here for a long time, are a huge strength. The size of the district, you know, as Lynn said, these administrators and teachers, they know all of the kids in my children's elementary school. And it's a really wonderful thing. And those teachers who are staying in the district despite pay disparities, they're amazing. And I think the flip side of that is, you know, some weaknesses in the district are student and teacher retention. Those are serious concerns. I think that communication between the district and both the parents in the district, as well as the constituents, is another weakness that I would like to see changed. Thank you.
I do believe our strength is teachers also. Not just our teachers, but anybody that is employed by Federal Hawking. I haven't met anybody that isn't well-rounded, intelligent, and who does not care about these kids in this district. And one of the weaknesses is communication. We are not uniform, I don't believe. That's my opinion. And I believe that communication is lacking in all aspects, whether it's from administration, the Board, to teachers, to parents. So getting people involved and allowing them to know what is going on and that communication is a barrier we need to break down, and we need to have that. So that's what's important. I feel like that's what we're lacking.
Thank you, everyone. Our next question is from the audience. How do you feel about efforts to remove books about LGBTQ topics from school libraries? And this will begin with Dan, followed by Jenny, then Crystal and Lynn.
How do I feel about it? I don't, I guess maybe I don't know that it's happening. If it is... I don't, I think it's a free speech world. The people should, you know, if it's in the library, people should be able to read it. And we shouldn't be banning books or anything. If there's something that needs to be banned in the school, you know, the Board, I believe, could ban it. I'm not really for banning stuff. I think if someone doesn't want to read it, they should have that right not to read it, you know, and go there.
Yeah, I agree with Dan. I don't think that books should be banned. I think it's a parent's responsibility to decide what's appropriate for their child. It is not the school's responsibility to do that.
Can you repeat that question? I'm sorry.
Of course, yes. The question is, how do you feel about efforts to remove books about LGBTQ topics from school libraries?
As far as I know, when I've looked at our policies, I did dig a little bit in. We actually have a policy about removing a book. We do not have a book banned. Our Board has a list of books that they have read and they have approved, is what I am reading on our policy site. So I don't feel we need to have bans in place because I feel like we have maturely been able to talk through things. So that is how I feel about that.
Thank you. Policy first, and you always want to be ahead of the game. So if there is an issue, and I haven't heard in the system, school system, I haven't heard that there is an issue, so I think it's a question in the atmosphere. But that said, I think first a policy is set, and you follow your policy on that. I don't see it as a big issue. I haven't heard it, but I've been asked in this position running. It's been the number-one question I've been asked. I think most of the time, I spent a lot of time in the library when I was here. It was my office for a little while, and I held meetings over there. And I honestly never saw a kid come in and go peruse the books. They went in, they came in for team meetings, they talked in the room. I think today's world with social media, online, if a child's eager to learn something and get their hands on something, they'll find it. And I guess, I think it's a little out of date to think that they're going to go to the school library to find it. They'll probably grab their phone or their computer first.
So our next question is somewhat related. What do you believe is the proper role for the school board in terms of the development and approval of curriculum and of books? And we're going to go Jenny first, followed by Crystal, then Lynn, then Dan.
So my understanding of the way that curriculum is developed is that the principals work with a teacher who is not one of the teachers working within the district to develop curriculum. And I think in general, we should trust that our educators are making appropriate choices. They are the ones who, you know, have degrees in education. And I expect that, in general, the Board will oversee and okay those, but that the Board would not necessarily need to change curriculums because the educators have done a responsible job of producing them to begin with. Thank you.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Sure. What do you believe is the proper role of the school board in terms of the development and approval of curriculum and books?
So I believe our role as a Board for the curriculum, so our superintendent does run the school. That's who runs it. So he is the one who's getting the feedback. He's the one who's allowing the principals to do reviews on the teachers and different things. So he's going to bring back that feedback also to the Board. So our job is to take in consideration what teachers have to say. They're the one in the classroom with our kids. So I feel like our role as the Board is to be open-minded. And if we need to change policies around because of that, then we will. And our curriculum and stuff like that. So our role as a Board is to be supportive, but also to change and not be afraid to change because the world is ever-changing, and we're going to get stuck if we don't.
You know, it's a tough one because it's so prescriptive now with the standards, the Boards of Education, state Boards, and education is prescriptive for us. So it's tough. I would say, I would be eager to see our curriculum be varied and be full of fun. How do you, and it's a tough thing to do. How do we meet all the standards? How do we set up the days when standardized testing is going on, so other activities? And I think Fred Hawke has done a good job, at least in the high school, what I observed, with their lunchtimes, allowing children to go out and venture into different things, different activities. School isn't all about the writing, reading, arithmetic. So I would encourage the Board, I'm not sure we dig deep into curriculum. I'm not an educator. I'm a registered nurse by background. So I would defer that work to the superintendent and the principals, who are educators. But I would really like to know, and I don't know it, but I'd like to see variety and fun and variation tucked into the curriculum.
Like everyone else has said, the superintendent runs the day-to-day operations of the school. And so, you know, they're the ones that are required to make sure that the curriculum and the Board oversees that. I would say back in 2008, Dr. Wood was the middle school, high school combination principal. And as a Board, we figured out that Amesville and Coolville were teaching different things. So the kid came, a child came to the middle school. Some were taught different things in math, different levels of math. So, you know, the Board got involved. We spent money, spent money on different books to align the curriculum, you know, in the elementary schools. That's what the Board has to do, is oversee, you know, with the help of the administration, of what's going on in the district, what's going on in the classroom. And, you know, it's going back to the transparency of the whole issue with the staff, the students, talking it out with administrators, that the Board then will have to get involved financially or with a policy.
Thank you. For our next question, we'd like to know what your opinion is of the current school district policies towards students with special needs. This includes mainstreaming students with behavioral problems, English-language learners, and students who face the problems of poverty. And first we'll hear from Crystal, followed by Lynn, then Dan, and then Jenny.
I feel like I've spoken to some teachers that have said it's been a little bit hard because we have more children that are coming up with IEPs. I think IEPs are a great thing for certain children. It's just not for everybody. And with IEPs, if you understand them, you have so much time that you have to spend with them. You have, there are certain guidelines that you have to follow by the state also. With that being said, I don't feel like we have enough staffing to do that. So what is happening, I feel like sometimes our IEP children are getting integrated, and they're getting lost in the process of all this. And I just feel like with the more and more children that are coming up with IEPs, I feel like we have got to find something different in our policy to help provide that for our staff here. I know that they're very overwhelmed, not just here. Amesville, Coolville... I know that they're very overwhelmed, not just here, Ainsville, Coolville, everywhere. It's every district. It's just very overwhelming and I just don't feel like we are supporting that and we need to figure out a way to do so.
I'm, I'm pondering because I'm thinking of all kinds of things when we talk about this topic. Is it a child in a wheelchair? Is it a child in the IEP? Is it a child with a speech impediment and needs their speech therapist to help them out? The range is so big. And again, I would say that I think what I've observed here in the school system, and not being in the classroom, my work as, on the grant was not in the classroom. But I, I had good experiences with those. Seeing what I saw was positive. I am sure that there is, are some missteps or some children are overlooked, but I, I have faith in our faculty, the counselors, and I did work with some of them, with this family in particular that I shepherded. And I thought that there was good, healthy consideration of that individual, as an individual with a disability or with a, with a need. I didn't see them boxed in by their disability or that definition of their predicament.
Could you repeat the question?
Oh, sure. What's your opinion of the current school district policies towards students with special needs such as mainstreaming students with behavioral problems, English language learners, and students who face problems of poverty, et cetera?
Well, I like the inclusion policy. I think, you know, you need to get kids used to being together, used to doing it. I think we have a lot of IEPs. I don't know, I am not a professional educator, but it seems like we don't have enough coverage. But I, it's staffing. But I would also say we need to advocate for fair funding, fair school funding. It's, it's, we need to contact our state legislatures and be strong with them because the school funding that the state of Ohio has has already been ruled unconstitutional by the state's Supreme Court. And we continue to do it. We need to press them on it so we could have fair funding and help all the children together.
I agree with Dan about inclusivity in the classroom. And I think, you know, it's a balance because at a certain point, sometimes behaviors become disruptive to classrooms and a call has to be made. You know, I know that it can be really difficult for teachers when they don't have enough help with behavioral issues. And that's, that's a tricky balance to achieve, right? These kids need to feel like they're a part of the school and also the rest of the kids need to have the opportunity to learn in the classroom. And yeah, state funding, state funding for the district is an issue. I think poverty is a huge concern both in our district and within the county in general. And I don't know that anyone has a great solution for that one yet. But adjusting state funding could be a good start.
Thank you. For our next question, we'd like to know what you would do to attract highly qualified educators to the federal Hocking School District. We'd like to hear first from Lynn, followed by Dan, then Jenny, and then Crystal.
We give everybody a lot of money. I think it's, we have to count on the inherent good that's here and attract. And I know that we have a good catch of people from the university, families that live in the area. What always impresses me is children that have gone through this system as a student or are off to college and they come back to teach here. And I think, you know, that is a very good calling card. That says a lot about what happens here. Attracting teachers to this area is a tough one. We are rural, we're southeast Ohio. We have an umbrella over us, maybe, that says certain things about us before ever people ever come here. I think bringing in college graduates, seniors, children, internship programs, again with the university, I know we have some of those. But continue to build bridges with Marietta colleges, with the colleges here. Getting young educators about ready to graduate or who are already out in the education world here to visit and see how we do our work and how we teach our students.
Well, I think we have to figure out a pay scale for the teaching staff to keep them. Like I said earlier, the last 10 years, there's no raise for a teacher here. We need to somehow figure out housing. I don't know how to do that, but housing, you know, there's, you know, we, we had a teacher recently, a husband and wife. You know, they moved over to Trimble Elementary School and drove every day. And Kirby ended up to be a principal driving back and forth. You know, that's hard on your family. That's, you know, and you're gone extra, what, 45 minutes to an hour driving. And, you know, we, we just need to find professional development and costs for teachers to keep them and not have 14 leave at once. Because, you know, we, I, we have good teachers. We just need to keep them in our fold here.
We've got Jenny next.
I think that pay is a big, excuse me, I'm doing the microphone thing. I think that teacher salaries are a huge, huge concern for teachers in the district and for attracting new teachers. You know, we are one of the lowest-paying districts in the neighboring areas. And when you look at the number of step raises available for teachers in this district, it's 15, and in surrounding districts, it's 29. That's a big difference throughout the course of your career. And I think that that is just incredibly important when we're talking about teacher retention as well as attracting new teachers to the district.
I honestly believe we need to hear from the teachers. What keeps the ones that we've had here? What do they think that would make it better to stay here? Because I will tell you that I am a nurse outside of this and I'm probably one of the lower nursing paying jobs, but I enjoy my job. So if you have teachers and you have staff that enjoy your job, pay sometimes isn't always the best, you know, it's not always the first thing you're looking at. So honestly, I do believe we, our teachers need more pay, absolutely. But I honestly think that if they're happy where they're at, word of mouth is such an important thing. So we need to find out what's making them happy or what's not. This is our teaching staff. We need them in order to keep our district going.
So our next question is, how does a school board balance the need to provide a quality education with the need to respond to the local taxpayer burden? We will go in this order, Dan first, then Jenny, followed by Crystal, and then Lynn.
I mean, last time when I was on the board for 12 years, we talked considerably. There was no need to go for a raise, you know, in property taxes, ask for one, or an income tax because we always felt that, you know, we, it just wouldn't pass. We just had to do with what we had, you know. Property taxes keep going up because of house values. But, you know, I think you just have to be a wise and careful about the tax money, you know. It's, it's, it's everyone's money and we, you just have to be careful spending it. Every dollar counts and, you know, you just can't just blow it. You just have to use it the best that you can and, and, you know, keep hoping that the state will do a fair funding formula.
I agree with Dan in that it's definitely a balancing act. And, you know, there is an amount of fiscal awareness that's required. And also perhaps it's worth trying to levy the district for, you know, a little bit more funding to get a little bit more done. And that perhaps there is a balance in there somewhere. And perhaps the people in the district also care about what's happening in the school district and would be willing to support that. And it's worth looking at, at least.
I also agree with, with Dan and you on that. I also think that if our community was more aware and more participation within the school district and the school board, and, and just trying to drag them in to do that because sometimes they don't know about things and we just need to educate ourselves. And maybe they would be more than happy to help, you know, within the district as far as money and the taxes.
I think we have to be bold about going out and asking for more money for our, from the people who live in our district. I like Dan's idea and I think we should pursue staying with the state and on the state's shoulders about our share. But these are our kids. This is our community and we educate these children. I think the burden of paying for their education through public funds is a blend between the local here and the state. I understand there hasn't been a lot of support for any levy changes or changes in what the local, our communities pay for. I think it's time. It's important for us to invest in the future of our children.
Our next question is, I'm assuming from the audience because it's all in an envelope. How can the district find a balance between applied education and college prep education? With this question, we're gonna go Jenny, then Crystal, followed by Lynn, and then Dan.
I think that's a really interesting question. And I think that whether you are headed to college or not, there is the potential for applied experience. I, I think at a certain point, you know, there were a lot of students doing internships. And I think that that gave people just incredible experience, whether you are headed to college or not, to develop perspective and skillset and kind of get an idea for what direction you're going.
Will you repeat that one more time for me?
Sure. How can the district find a balance between applied education and college prep education?
So that is a tricky question because we do have a lot of children that are not going to probably go to college and that's okay. We have a lot of trades that make really good money. I feel like our district is doing a pretty good job, like you said, with internship. But not only that, but there is the opportunity to go to Tri-County to learn a trade. I believe that our counselors do a really good job. Our principals do a good job in our building as far as if a kid is interested in a college. They get them hooked up with a counselor. Our counselors here have done a really good job of helping them on the track of, listen to this college, in this college, and let's go ahead and take an SAT for this year. So I feel like we have done a pretty good job. I'm going to be honest, I'm not as educated on this subject as I wish I was to answer this question, but from what I can hear and tell, I do feel like our district is doing a good job.
There is a blend of letting the child's nature flow and see where that child wants to go. Some children say right off the bat what they want to do. I'm not sure, I knew at age 15 or 16 what I wanted to do. Some children know, I want to work on cars, you know. I want to go work in somebody's home and be a healthcareer. I want to go into culinary. And they're, and the best thing about our world is there's a place for everybody if we give them a good education. I think one of the things I've seen through the senior projects and portfolios here is that each person who does that is challenged to their level. Everybody doesn't do the same thing. And the advisors, and I watched this with two seniors this last two years, that it wasn't always the same. And, and sometimes there are complaints about that. Well, this one had to do this one, this one had to do this. But the student is challenged to their level and then to exceed that level. My grandson graduated from Tri-County this last year and I'd say that he almost felt disengaged completely from FedHoc. It was hard to see that. So I think we need to build better bridges. I know the money follows the kid to Tri-County, but we need to keep that child connected to the school, his alma mater.
Well, I think we need to prepare kids for the future and not for the past. We need to invest in STEM education and other programs, prepare students for the skills that they are going to need for the future workforce and offer students opportunities to learn about different career paths and explore their interests. And that includes more internships. I don't think we have enough internships. You know, kids struggle to do it. And not only do we need to do things for the interns, you know, kids have trouble paying for it. Kids have trouble paying for the gas, transportation to get to the things. We need to be different. We need to help every kid. We need more, you know, STEM. We need more, you know, career opportunities for the kids. And, you know, we, we just talked about Tri-County, but, you know, I, I talk, and Andrew Erhardt and Buckley, you know, they're both honor roll students going to Tri-County and, you know, they're well involved in our, in our school. So, you know, each kid, we just need to keep pushing to get the best out of every child.
So for our next question, we'd like to hear your opinion on this. So a lot of families in the FedHoc School District send their children to Athens City Schools. How would you work to make FedHoc more attractive for these families and their children? We will go in the order of Crystal, followed by Lynn, then Dan, and then Jenny.
I honestly think that we have actually a lot of kids that go to a lot of different districts, not just Athens. I've, I've heard of several families transferring out this year even, not just this year, the year before, but a lot this year. So I feel like we need to be asking why that's happening. I don't know why that's happening. So I can't answer this question to my best ability because I don't even know why. So I feel like our administrators and our board, and we just need to be involved and find out why and see if we can make a resolution for that.
I think that one of the things, I don't like you, I don't know the background, but I think just as you check out of a hotel on a Saturday or Sunday from a family wedding and you get a survey a day later about how the stay was, I think we need to query the children and the families that are leaving our district and to find out, is it because that school teaches French? You know, is it because of a program? Is it distance? Is it the bus route? My mom and dad now live closer to Athens than they do here. I think querying those people who have left the system to see what that depository of information would give us. I don't know either enough about what the departures and the succession reasons are to answer that question any further than that.
A lot of people think it's, the grass is greener on the other side. But, you know, we, we've lost kids to sports. The school board used to fight for years. The school board used to fight that the elementary schools were going to close. And, and we saw people leave because of that. But, you know, for the last 15 years or so, I think the board has been pretty calm, not doing things, you know. You know, we made an issue that, you know, the elementary schools are going to stay open. You know, we, we have a great FFA program. We have, you know, good sports programs, and people have left, you know, to go play football, you know, when we lost our football team. You know, I could think of four or five kids that left. But we need to invest in communication to let the people know, or, you know, the community know what's going on and, you know, why it's the best FFA program, why it's the best around, you know, for, for science or whatever. And if we get our internship program going really good and do different programs, and we get our STEM program going, it can only help us.
I agree with Crystal and Lynn that we need to be asking parents why they are moving their children out of the district. I think that's the biggest place to start, because if we don't know why kids are leaving, how can we address it? You know, I, I think that's absolutely the starting place. You know, as a working parent, I have heard some other parents say that they wish that there were aftercare programs for younger children to help with, you know, that kind of window after school ends, but before working hours end. But really, we just need to be asking to find out what we can do to keep the students and attract some more students back.
Okay, we're almost to the hour, so this will be our final question. What's your philosophy regarding homework at the middle and high school grade levels? We're going to begin with Lynn, followed by Dan, then Crystal, and then Jenny.
My daughter went to a really intense school system, and she had hours of homework every night. And so it made evenings pretty miserable. And then when my grandchildren started in this system, and I was saying, where's your homework? Where's your homework? And they started explaining the block schedule and the time that they had in school. It made a, it was a good conversion for me. And I was a generation, it was my daughter and her family that were dealing with homework. Children are fatigued when they get home from school. It's busy day. Even just the academics, but the social energy they expend. And then you put an athletic event on that. I see families eating out of the concession stands because that's the meal they're having that night when they're here for volleyball or basketball. I think it's a balance. I, I have now a, myself and my grandson went through college, and he's in college now, and I worried about him being a FedHoc grad. Like, will he know how to study? And he's proving that he knows how to study outside. The parameters are not having much homework. There are basic study skills that you'd gain and through long-term projects, you ask that children to do, to build, and then they, that sustains them, and they carry it on into their next field of education, their next level of education.
Well, my wife's a teacher, and she gives lots of homework, so. You know, I think earlier we talked about curriculum, and we all said, oh, it's the teachers, it's the teachers, you know, and the administrators, and the principals. Well, you know, if a teacher has to get through so much stuff, so much time, and they have to give out homework, I, you know, it's up to the teaching staff and the principal and the superintendent. I don't think it's up to the board to decide if a teacher or a child should have homework. You know, it depends on what they can get through in class, and they only have so much time in there to get it done, that there's things that they have to get taught because of the curriculum that we have.
I agree that it's a balance. Obviously, there probably has to be some homework. But, you know, that downtime for those kids, at the end of the day, when they have done all the things that they've done and learned all the things that they've learned every day, I think that downtime is really valuable. That recovery time prepares them to do it all again the next day, to cram all that information into their brains and to be as regulated and mindful as possible while they're doing that. And that's very important and valuable.
As a mom of a teenager here right now, I appreciate not having all that homework, bringing it home. There are a lot of ways that things are learned different within the classroom that I was not taught that they want you to do their way now. So I appreciate them not always sending a bunch home, because I don't even understand some of it, to be honest. A lot of times, the, the way I understand it when my kid talks is that they have time in class to do this homework. Not only that, but they have study halls. They also have advisories and different things like that. And that, and that time, they can use that time to ask for help and different things on those matters. So as, if they do have homework, that is very minimal that I, I'm aware of in our district. But as far as, they are given a lot of time to get that accomplished during the school day and have the teachers here at their availability to get help. So I definitely don't feel, I feel like our district's doing a pretty good job, and I don't think it's the board's decision on the homework part, as long as the teachers are doing what they need to do and our children are where they need to be.
Thank you, everyone. So when I'll move to our closing statements, each of you will have two minutes for your final remarks. And we will go in this, well, we'll begin with, with Crystal.
So in closing, I just appreciate the time of being with you guys. I've learned a lot from you. I've learned a lot by running for school board, because I've had to research things myself, just to prepare myself to even know what I'm talking about. So in that aspect, as a parent, I feel like it's really important that we are engaged in our children's lives, because there is technology and everything that they can run with. It's really important that we take part in their lives. They have a lot going on, mental health-wise and everything. So I want to be able to advocate for your kid, but not just for your kids, because they are the most important thing, but for your district, for your community. So if you have questions, I want you to be able to find answers for those by coming to the board or by doing whatever. It's really actually very encouraged that your public does come to board meetings and they participate, and they know these policies themselves. And then as a parent, I've neglected myself to know those. So I do want to be more proactive, and I want to help others be more proactive.
I want to jump back to the homework question for just a minute. I had a couple of thoughts on that. And I, one of the things that I know about our district is that not every child has computers or has parents at home in the evening. A lot of parents might work that second and third shift, or they might not. The family that I helped with a couple of years ago, no internet, no phone. So homework was a real challenge, and I cherish that we could talk about it in the car, see that they're catching up or staying where they should be in the classroom. I think that's one thing that is probably more prevalent in our district than the richer or the more affluent districts in our area. I think that what I would like to bring to the board is a effort to make good citizens. We need all of our children to be educated, but they will go out and work and participate in this world. So good communication skills, not so much, you know, how much trigonometry they know or how well they did in their chemistry, although that's important if that's the field they're going into. But I would like to really see us, and I think we do do a good job, but it's focusing on life skills, teaching them things that will, good negotiation skills, good listening skills. And they learn that from modeling that they see with the teachers and the faculty and the students, embodying a, an environment of respect and learning. That's what the job of our school system, part of the major job of the school system is.
I think that it's really important to be involved in our communities, however that comes about. And this is one way that we can participate. This is one way we can be involved and impact the district and the county and kind of the world at large as we, you know, help to make policies that shape the educational experiences of these students. That's huge. The educational experiences they get are going to stay with them forever. They are going to impact the whole rest of their lives, and that's a really big thing.
I'd like to thank the audience for coming and thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this nice event. I volunteered in this school probably for about 20-plus years, doing different things, athletics a lot. And I really like it. I, you know, it's a heck of a good place, a good school, and it's a good community here that we have. And I would pledge, if you vote for me, I mean, we're going to make it better. We're going to communicate better than the board has ever communicated. We're going to let you know, whether it's by Facebook or mailing a mailer out to people, what is going on in our district? What is going on with our kids? What do we need help with in the community? You know, where do we need some volunteers? What can we do to make it best for every single child that we have and that we take care of? And I would appreciate you all, and if you'd like to vote for me, please feel free to.
I'd like to thank all the candidates for their participation in our democratic process. And thank you voters for submitting so many thoughtful questions and for joining us to learn more about these candidates. We urge all of you to make voting, a voting plan now. Check for your voter registration at voteohio.gov to make sure it's up to date. Early in-person voting does begin tomorrow, October 11th, and Election Day is November 7th. Thank you all, and have a good night.